Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, the fifth one for this year. It's the 16th of June of 2022. I'll call councillors' attendance, there's myself, councillor Kunsman, councillor Milligan, councillor Fekner, councillor Doyle, councillor Tully, I see councillor Islands arrived, and councillor Madsen. And I see that councillor John X not here, I haven't received an apology, has anyone received an apology? She's on her way, okay, we'll just note her attendance when she arrives, thank you. We'll now move on to the work, sorry, the acknowledgement of country. If this city council respectfully acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land upon which we meet, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of our proud people. I now call for any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. There being none, thank you. We'll now go on to business outstanding, we have two pieces of business outstanding. The first is the Ipswich 2032 summit, so this is a report concerning the mayoral minute of the 24th of March, and responding to recommendation A, which is to draft up an Ipswich 2032 summit. The recommendation is that the report be received and contents noted, I will move that, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion? No, I think it's a good structure, it's a good start, I appreciate it, and I think there's a fair bit of excitement in the community to be involved. We've had a few discussions with the state and the federal MPs as well, they wish to be quite strongly involved as well, so it's great. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the report to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item two, which is the response to petition reinstatement of pedestrian crossing at Blackstone Road-Silkstone. This is a report concerning a petition received from the local community requesting the reinstatement of the pedestrian crossing on Blackstone Road, near the intersection with Cooler Bar Street and Silkstone, just note, Vicky, that councillor John X is here, thank you. We have recommendations A and B, does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers on this petition? No, in that case, I'll move recommendation A and B, do we have a second? Thank you councillor Doyle, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you mayor, this particular petition has been brought to us by a number of residents living in and around Cooler Bar Street. We've been dealing with a lot of other residents as well. There's lots of concerns there, I guess, with the volume of traffic, and probably since the construction of the shopping centre there, it's attracted a lot more, I guess, heavy vehicles, delivery trucks. We've worked with Cooler Bar Street residents around traffic calming to stop the rat running. This particular request to reinstate a crossing whilst we appreciate, you know, the concerns of residents, the advice from council officers is that, you know, there is a pedestrian crossing further up Blackstone Road near the school, and then in the opposite direction, there is the traffic lights with the pedestrian crossing. So whilst not an ideal response, I understand residents might be a little disappointed. There are safety, other safety issues, if council were to implement another crossing there, we're obviously bound by state legislation and road rules etc, so it's just, yeah.
Thanks councillor Doyle and through you mayor. And just thinking about what that stretch of road looked like 10 years ago compared to what it is today. I mean, it's an extremely busy road, and those pedestrian interactions with the traffic can be quite dangerous. And we know, and there's a standard that's been set by the state, that it's generally inconsistent with modern standards, and in particular pertaining to one's safety when traversing the roads, that anything over 60 kilometres an hour, drivers aren't genuinely expecting for there to be a pedestrian crossing there. So, you know, we are bound by safety standards imposed by the state government and TMR, and I appreciate that. It's also worth noting that there's a brand new childcare centre that's going to be built there, and it has its own challenges. It has been approved, and they do have the requisite traffic management in place with a left-in, left-out approach. And then directly outside of the childcare centre, they're quite close to the Silkstone shops, just for context for the group today, there is pedestrian refuge there as well. And I note that that doesn't give the pedestrian the right of way, but it does allow for those interactions to be minimised to just one way of traffic. So I think the report here is very informative. I think although the petitioners, you know, will be disappointed in the result here today, I think the report gives enough context and goes a really long way to explaining, you know, the situation in this particular location. So I thank the officers for their very informative and detailed report, and I implore the petitioners to actually read and consider what we've put together in response to them as well.
Thank you, through you, mayor, if I may, just one final comment, that councillor Fekner and I have been advocating hard for residents in that area, and whilst the advice given will be disappointing for residents, we continue to talk with councils staff on a monthly basis to improve the outcomes there.
Thank you councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, I've had discussions with Mr and Mrs Dickey, who are the main petitioners, but also with some of the neighbours and people who've also signed this petition as well, I've met them a couple of times at community. I had, most of the people, the people I've spoken to who are petitioners here, made the claim to me that the lights there on Grange Road and Blackstone Road didn't allow pedestrian access, because I'm obviously living in Raceview, I know this. I go to Silkstone Village at least once a week, so I know the area quite well. So quite a few of the residents who signed the petition told me that you couldn't walk there, and I've personally checked, you can't, all four ways you can walk around there. So maybe it's just highlighting to people too that that particular light, there is a pedestrian, sorry, there's a pedestrian crossing there, from a signalised pedestrian crossing there as well. So maybe we just need to let people know that as well, because there's certainly a lot of people telling me that they couldn't cross there, and they can. Anyone, any other discussion? No, I'll put a recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Thank you. Councillor, I'll just double check one thing, because I have a couple of things, the declarations of interest on matters of the agenda, do you have any declarations of interest for the GIW? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item three, which is the confirmation of the minutes. It's the recommendation that the minutes of the meeting held on the 5th of May 2022 be confirmed. Would anyone like to ask the council office any questions? No, in that case, I will move those minutes, do I have a second for those minutes? Thank you councillor Milligan, any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous and carried. Item four is the adoption of the updated landscape areas on nature strips policy. Does anyone have any questions of council officers on this matter, councillor Talia and councillor Doyle too? May I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Morning, Mayor and councillor, Shaun Madigan, general manager of infrastructure and environment.
Thank you, I think councillor Talia had your hand up first.
Thank you mayor, I refer to the track changes, this is paragraph 12 in red, towards the end of the existing policy.
So what was your question councillor Tully?
I've got two, but I'll just take the sequential. Oh yeah.
Thank you.
In the second paragraph, I think the word should be relevant rather than relative.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a typo, if we could correct that please, Vicky.
Relevant.
Relevant.
Now, the other is, just below that, it talks about if for any reason the existing garden beds do not meet the standard, the standard either partially or fully will be removed at the resident's expense. I think there should be provision for it to be corrected or variable changed or upgraded to, if it's only partially, you know, it seems a bit over the top if there's only some technical or minor non-compliance, that they're required to remove the whole thing and then start again. So could we craft some words to?
Do you have a suggestion on what you'd like to say, or?
No, it's too complicated for me.
Oh. Fancy lawyer like yourself, councillor. Standards.
Does not.
I guess the residents would be given the opportunity to comply?
Yeah, what about we add, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so should we be somehow linking that second last sentence? If it does not meet the standard, it will be removed, should we not be linking that to the first paragraph? We're introducing the concept of, I guess, working with a resident to negotiate an outcome. So I think the two.
I'm just thinking perhaps in that sentence, the second last sentence, where it does not meet the standard, to change either partially or in full, just to in brackets to say, does not meet the standard in full, it will be removed at the resident's expense. Or if it does not partially meet the standard, the resident will be afforded the opportunity of bringing it up to the standard.
So again, sort of consistent with the theme of that second sentence, consideration will be given to providing a post-approval permit following consultation with the resident and assessment of the existing garden area.
Yeah, well, that would match, what I've suggested would match, then providing the permit once it had been brought into compliance.
My reading of that, it's just, it's a bit disjointed, it's not really. So potentially, do we say if after consultation referred to above, agreement is not reached, then the resident's required to remove it at their expense, something along those lines.
Oh, well, that'd be the ultimate situation, in the committee clerk's written, my suggestion up there in the second last paragraph was to delete the words either partially or, those three words, so that we capture that by, delete the words either partially or, so that paragraph, oh, sorry, that sentence would refer to. Oh, well, I think we can resolve it and get it on the road.
If you could put some wording forward so we could discuss it.
Yeah, and include, yeah, or if it does not partially meet the standard, the resident will be afforded, afforded the opportunity to bring it up to standard, and then a permit would be issued under that first paragraph, yeah. I'm happy, I think that covers what I intended anyway.
I'll just, I think councillor Milligan had his hand up, he may have heard a suggestion as well.
Yes, mayor, well, I'd probably suggest that if we're moving forward, if we just describe the intent that we wish, and then for the item to come back to us, and in the interim, if councillors want to discuss it with the appropriate officer to make corrections.
I think if we can give them wording now, that would be great.
Would it be just simpler, if I may, through the chair, just to say either in that sentence that you're questioning councillor Tully, if for any reason etc, either partially or in full will be rectified or removed at the resident's expense, would that help?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, probably would, yeah, I'd be happy with that.
If we just insert rectified or after will be?
Will be rectified or removed, yeah, I think that, just to add those two words, yeah, that's simple. And that ties in with the first paragraph then.
Sorry to complicate, the more I read that sentence, the more I think it should say property owner's expense. If I rented a property and there was something historical here, if anybody made any assertion that that was my problem to rectify it, I would be going off.
I'll just look through the rest of the policy.
Well, I'm happy to adopt that as the, just the alternative with the addition of those words and the.
It does refer to property owner throughout the rest of the policy.
Correct that?
Thank you. So just in that line, that's got the third paragraph, based on what we're seeing, I think we need to remove, Vicky, the, yes. No, I was gonna say, I thought they were just agreeing that would, in that third paragraph, the only thing that would change there would be the inclusion of the word rectified or, that was my understanding, so if you wanted to take the beginning part of that sentence? So after the word be, it would be rectified or, and then remove, so it's just including two words. So. Yes, so can I just, can you remove the, if you go to highlight the first word, remove, and keep going to the word be, which is just before rectified, and delete those words, please?
And say, insert?
Insert.
The words.
And take out be?
Be rectified.
Take out the word be?
That's right, yeah.
And just, and in commas, I guess, rectified or?
After will be, the end of that sentence, and we're done.
I'll just double check with you councillor Tully.
That's fine.
Yep, sorry, any other, sorry, I think councillor Doyle, you had a question for Mr Madigan?
Sorry, mayor. Mr Madigan, I just wanted to clarify, the policy's being updated to include and acknowledge the post approvals process because of just addressing the historic installations. And as councillors, I guess we've been, it's been brought to our attention a number of times, examples of where residents have landscaped the verge to some extent or the other. Are we at council proactively seeking out problematic verges? Or do we usually wait for a complaint to come in from a resident?
Sorry, the majority of it is complaint driven, or if it's an identified safety issue. So there's been examples of planted on the verge where there's trees and things, and the people can't see access out onto the road from their driveways, for example. But we do not proactively go out and pursue these matters unless, one, it's a safety issue, or we receive a complaint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions of Mr Madigan? No, thank you very much, Mr Madigan, I appreciate that. Any other questions of any other council officers? No, in that case, I will move recommendations A and B together, do I have a second for that, councillor Doyle? Any other discussion on this? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item five, which is the proposed Ipswich adopted infrastructure charges resolution. Would anyone like to ask council officers any questions on this particular matter? No, in that case, I will move the recommendation. Do I have a second, Vicky councillor? Any discussion on the matter? Put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item six, which is the development application for Griffith Group One Childcare Centre at Brussel. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officers? No? In that case. In that case, I'll move the recommendation as it stands there, is there a second? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Any discussion on the matter? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Could you put your microphone on, please?
Thank you. As one of the regional councillors, I agree with the proposal to build the childcare centre at 102 Pine Mountain Road, Brussel. I acknowledge the submissions from local residents, I have met with residents and understand their concerns. I believe their concerns were well motivated regarding the safety and amenity of their community. However, it is my belief that the reservations they have expressed have been met by the conditions imposed. That is, that their concerns will be dealt with by the requirements put upon the developer, including traffic and noise mitigation. These conditions are imposed by council and also Department of Transport and Main Roads. I note particularly, given the existing childcare centre, that it is not for council to make decisions that limit competition. I have not become convinced that there are sufficient grounds to deny approval of this development.
Thank you councillor Kunsman. Any other discussion? I think, because I can, councillor Kunsman, I can see that council have placed a number of conditions from footpaths to. Oh, there, as I can hear, councillor Quinzman, I can see that council's placed a number of conditions from, from footpaths to, um, noise reduction and, and so on, and I can see that the state government, because he's sitting on a state road, have also given their approval, uh, for, for this as well.
Um, ma'am, could I just, um, my grandson goes to the Kendi down the road in Clem Street, so I may just abstain from this vote, please.
Okay, so could you please do the, if you're going to declare an interest, you need to. Okay, well, unless, unless, are you declaring an interest or are you just going to abstain?
Okay, yeah, I'll abstain from the vote, please.
No worries.
That, that then triggers a requirement, I believe, for each councillor then to, certainly at least one councillor to, to raise an issue, the person may have a, uh, declarable interest.
Okay, I'll do it, all right.
Thank you councillor Tully.
So which number is it that I do a declar, okay. In accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Sheila Island informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item six in, uh, titled development application, uh, from the Griffiths Group for a childcare centre at Brussels. Uh, the nature of my declarable conflict is that my grandson goes to the childcare centre in Clem Street, Brussels.
And how will you be dealing with this?
Well, I can leave the meeting.
That, that's what you've elected to do?
Yeah, that's what I'll do. Sorry.
Um, sorry, so, so the councillor has made it.
Um, I don't know where it comes down to my options, um.
So councillor On, you have the option to ask the council to vote to see if you have a conflict or not, or you could, or you may, or you may decide to leave, that's up to you.
I invite the other councillors to term if I can continue to participate in this decision process.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Do you have any, um, financial or other?
I know, it's just my grandson goes, they, I pick him up occasionally.
Okay, councillor Tully, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, uh, more, more than just to cl, clarify that, that it doesn't seem to have any personal or financial interest, that the, um, the application is based on professional advice on a separate entity. And, um, you know, my view is, and I'd be prepared to move that she, uh, councillor Ireland be permitted to stay and vote if she wishes on the matter.
Yep, are you going to move that or would you?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll move it, i- if that's the sense of the meeting.
Yes. Okay, so I think the motion is that, that councillor can participate and vote on the, the item because there's no personal financial benefit to her and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Okay. Uh, so if you're moving that, I'll certainly second that. Put that to the vote, those in favour? Thank you, as you know, so you may stay and participate and vote if you, if you wish, yeah. Thank you. So, um, I think, um, I, I moved this and councillor Quinzman had, had seconded this, so I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried, thank you. We're now moving on to item seven, it's another development application, which is a change representation recommendation for wood mulching industries, enclosed compost manufacturing and biogas facility at Swanbank. May I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, mayor and councillors, Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. Obviously this D O when it came to us in March, had all, we went, the discussion, I think we went into closed session and we also had a long discussion about this because, uh, um, we're very keen to, to drive the market for invested composting and, and, and things like that. So to see this comeback for a clarification, I have a couple of questions. Um, they're asking for the cha, uh, change to the road to be built, could you outline the changes that they're wanting to, that they've put forward to council?
Uh, the, the condition currently requires the road to be constructed entirely on their property. Uh, at the moment, they, the, um, applicant owns properties on both sides and the road reserve is split between properties subject to the application and subject to a, a separate approval has been granted. The requirement of the condition requires the development to be essentially shifted down to accommodate the entirety of the proposed road to be on their property. However, uh, there, the existing approvals, um, also include the requirement to construct the road. Uh, and therefore it is possible for a scenario where half the road is constructed as part of this approval, where the other part is constructed on the other approval, therefore leaving it in its current approved place. As they are the applicant and approval owner and landowner for both land, um, subject to that road requirement, one of the options we've inserted in the change representations is that if it is already constructed under the other approval, it isn't necessary to, to shift the development south, so the road is still going to be constructed.
Okay.
Um, it's just whether it's in its current alignment or, or in between the two existing lots.
Is there a change in the materials that's going to be constructed out of?
Uh, there is a request for a change to, um, part of the internal, um, part of the roadworks inside the site to gravel, um, but we haven't approved that just yet. Um, we haven't got enough information from that request to make an assessment of that. The existing approval condition actually does allow us to have some discretion in determining the materials used, um, for that section of road that there has been a request to make a change, so as it is, we can accommodate the change down the track without making a change to the permit when it's additional material submitted.
My understanding is that currently it's a, well, a concrete or bitchman driveway, and they're wanting to change that to a gravel.
For a portion of it, that's correct, yes, so that would be further in the site, um, past the wheel wash, so that is the request. Um, and as I said, this, this change that, um, we re, made the recommendation for doesn't make that change because we don't have enough information about the type of material that they intend to use, um, and, but it is something we might be able to accommodate down the track.
Okay. Um, there's a bit of lot reconfiguration happening, would you mind in, in simple terms explaining how that benefits the people of Ipswich?
Um, part, part of the development eventually leads to a connection of Mount Juliot Road through what's, we probably call an east-west road, further through, um, Swanbank, um, and eventually to Ripley. Um, the, the proposal and the, the future land, um, subdivision around the site needs to accommodate that road. Um, so by preserving that road corridor, we preserve the right to construct that road through what we have in an infrastructure agreement down the track, so, um, really just clarifying those requirements and ensuring that the, um, approval doesn't compromise our ability to achieve that road.
Okay. Um, there seems to be some amendments to the sewage services as well.
Uh, that's right, so in our condition, we included a requirement for the site to be, um, have access to a sewer, uh, however, it is al, already proposed to have an onsite sewage detention, um, treatment system, so it, it is a necessary requirement, um, a bit of an oversight, I think, on our behalf.
Okay. Um, there seems to be some updates in the vehicle trip limits, what's the, um, impact of this change to vehicle?
The impact is that we've clarified the difference between the, um, staff vehicles and the heavy vehicles, what we really want to, um, retain an oversight of is the heavy vehicles, so we've made a clear distinction that the number of vehicles is X number, I think it's a hundred and forty vehicle trips for heavy vehicles and sixty vehicle trips for light vehicles, because in the past, when we've had a, a total vehicle trip, um, condition, there has been, um, sometimes inflation because of the, um, the staff vehicle trips, which aren't really causing an impact, the, the cars aren't the issues, normally the heavy vehicles, so the condition is clarified to permit a certain number of, um, civilian vehicles and, and then a larger amount of heavy vehicles, so it's just clarifying that, so when it comes to compliance, we've got really clear details of what we're looking for.
Okay. I can see there's some clarification of height rules for outdoor storage areas, do you mind outlining what they are?
Uh, yep, so that one's, um, fairly typical condition that we have for stacking of, um, so materials that you might have in a trade centre, for example, but there's a limit to how high we normally allow them to go, partially because of safety, partially because of visual amenity. Um, the, it's a little bit difficult to manage that with the stockpiles of the, um, uh, raw material for the compost, it, it, it has to be built up higher than that and our own facilities are built up higher than that. Uh, we don't expect there to be a visual amenity issue or a safety amenity, a safety issue from that.
So what's the height that they require?
Um, well, it's above more than three metres essentially, the three metres was the original restriction, so we'll allow it to be higher than that, but it is restricted by the amount of land they have available for storage spaces, uh, and, and for manoeuvring as well, so.
How much height above three metres are they looking at?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent certain how much higher that will be, um, I don't believe it'll be at a height that'll cause a visual amenity issue, given that the size of the building would probably be higher than the size of the stockpile itself.
What's the height of the building?
Uh, I'll have to get the plans. Just one second. Might have to do some scaling of the plans, just give me one second. So I'm not able to answer that question too quickly, um, I will be able to get that answer in a minute, I just need to use the programme to scale off the.
I guess, I guess I'll have to speak with the councils, but my view be, shouldn't be going higher than the building.
Oh, okay, I understand that, um, I don't think that's a, a possibility really, given the, um, the size of the composting storage area, um.
Yep. Um, I note too that, um, there were some changes, the infrastructure charges, based on the up to the floor plan, so those infrastructure charges will be reduced.
Mm-hmm, yep, so, uh, to explain that, we, um, calculate infrastructure charges based off, uh, gross floor area, uh, the original plans that we had sort of were, um, general, they didn't show any internal manoeuvring areas, um, the, the way our plan scheme works is that manoeuvring areas, uh, are excluded from gross floor area, so what they've done is they've provided more detail that shows where the vehicles would be manoeuvring inside the building, and we're able to exclude that from the, the gross floor area, so that's a, that's a legitimate way to reduce charges, um, and that's something that we generally negotiate as part of an N D N.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Bowles?
Yes, please.
Yes, councillor On?
Mr Bowles, uh, with the crushing of the concrete and, and other things, is that done in a shed or is that going to be done in open air?
So I, I don't believe there's much, I don't believe there'll be any con, concrete crushing, um, but the,
I was here, hang on, I'll just go and do.
The screening.
Yes, okay.
So, yeah, I think you might be meaning that.
There was the material change for the, um, it says that they are going to, I've, I've only highlighted the whole thing, but it, it talks about the grinding a, and crushing.
Yeah, that would be of the, predominantly the organic material, uh, but that is done, um, in a few different stages, um, predominantly in vessel. Uh, that's where most of the, um, composting activity occurs, but there is a screening, um, and some activity that happens outside where they deliver the raw green waste, so it goes through a variety of different phases, but, um, some of it will be outside, um, but the, the odorous section, the, the part that creates the, um, issues for council is, is in vessel, in, in a building.
Okay, and my second question was about the wheel wash during the wet weather, um, I don't know whether they were using the wheel wash or not, but there was a lot of clay brought out onto Mount Juliotet and I had a complaint from a motorbike rider who was coming out to get onto St Henry and his tyres slipped on it. Um, we're not making them build that half road to start off with, so are we, uh, going to put some conditions on them that if there's dust brought out into the road, they have to come and clean it?
Um, I can check on that, I mean, there, there will be, for this proposal, there will be a wheel wash and there will be a section of concrete after that, so um, I, I think that will be better managed through this approval than the current approval by, by a long margin. Um, in terms of cleaning the dirt on the roads, if it, for example, the wheel wash, uh, isn't effective for a particular vehicle, that's something that we, um, might be able to contact them to, to rectify, making sure the wheel wash is working a hundred percent, that's what we would normally do if we have that scenario. Um, otherwise, um, that's something we might need to look into if we get a request to clean the road, but in all circumstances, the wheel wash should be effective, um, with the proposal that we've been given. So, I, I don't think that the current use is perfect in terms of that, um, outcome where you've got vehicles tracking mud, same with, um, Cleanaway, uh, it's a similar scenario on New Chum Street there that we sometimes get in really bad, um, brain events, um, but I, I do think this will be massive improvement over that existing scenario.
It's just that, um, I'm not sure, um, whether tea trees have it as a condition, but we know from the com, community out there that if they do drop rocks or anything, um, they, it doesn't have to be recorded, they, they clean their road every couple of days to clear it of rocks, I was just wondering if we could put some condition on them to do the same, that was all.
Um, I, I do think that the, the, the way that it's structured now with the, um, length of the driveway and the length of the, uh, the location of the wheel wash is probably about the best we can expect. Um, to ask them to clean up a public road can be a bit tricky, um. I think what we need to be diligent on is ensuring that when there's non-compliance with that, we're out there and saying, look, you need to make sure this is working properly as per your approval, so that there isn't an, an issue in the first place, I, I don't think it's, I don't think the solution is clean up the road, it should just not be getting dirty in the first place.
I know, but we've got the, um, growth area of White Rock that'll be coming in to do their shopping and go to schools and things and you know, we leave it up to community all the time to report these bad habits instead of trying to stop them in the first place, that's just my opinion.
Yep, no, I understand that, and, and that's why we've gone ahead with the wheel wash and, and the way it's designed to prevent that from occurring, um. You, there are cer, certainly there are going to be events where, um, we'll, we'll need to be the police on that and, and go out there and do compliance, but I don't, I don't want to start off with that being the expectation, I, I would start off with the expectation that it will be a functional wheel wash, um, and we'll deal, deal with it as it comes up.
Um, thanks, Mr Bowles, I just want to loop back to, um, condition twenty-one B, um, with regards to the height of the stacking of the materials. Um, particularly the paragraph that points to, um, council's reasons as to why it would impose that condition, um, being the potential undesirable visual impacts from unco, uncontrolled stacking of materials. And then we go on to say that while this will be retained, it will be amended to clarify the height um, of three mi, metres does not apply to the windrows or stockpiles. Um, do we know with regards to the site layout that those higher piles might not be in the locations where the visual amenity would be impacted or not?
Um, look, I might have to, um, I'm, I'm fairly confident that the, the visual amenity won't be an issue, um, because of the, for example, the height of the windows are limited by the machinery required to construct them, so they, they're not, they're not these giant cranes, they're any
Yep.
medium-high vehicles, so there, there's a limit, a natural limit on the windows, for example. The stockpiles themselves are limited to certain locations that are, I suppose, further away from the highway and further away from areas that are creating, uh, would suffer from the visual amenity impacts of that, so they're, they're, you gotta, you gotta remember, there's the highway, then there's, uh, like an area of land, then there's road.
Yep.
The biogas facility is in, partially in front of a lot of these storage areas as well, so I, I'm fairly confident that it wouldn't be an issue.
That was my thought process as well, I just wanted to clarify in terms of the, the logic, um, in, in that paragraph, so, thank you, yeah.
I guess, Mr Bowles, um, noting our experience out here in Ipswich of the waste industry is that they'll push things to the limit. Um, and just, I know you've given us the assurance that the, that, that condition twenty-one B, um, that it won't be higher than the buildings, is there some way that we can mandate that, that it won't be higher than the?
We, we could add further words to that effect, I imagine, um, let me just have a look at the conditions, um.
If not, I could put it in, as a recommendation C.
Yeah, that, I don't see an issue with that, if we were to add a, uh, twenty-one C, uh, we could say, um, raw waste material and finished products, um, must not exceed the height of the building or even a nominal amount, but that's something we could add in. Um, if that's, that, that can provide an additional assurance, I, I'm, I've got no issues with that.
Thank you. Yep. Any other questions of Mr Bowles? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just check around the room, looking at, uh, adding an additional recommendation, sorry, before we go to discussion. I'd like to move recommendations A through to C as we see them. Do we have a secondor? Thank you councillor Doyle. Now move into discussion.
Yeah, just to you, ma'am, I mean, I don't know enough about what happens on site, um, and what the processes are. Um, I know that we like to be concise, um, when we're giving planning direction. Um, I know that we like to be concise, um, when we're giving planning directions and imposing conditions, and I just wonder if this might be superfluous in the end, um, because the physical constraints might not actually allow this to happen, so wondering if it's the most clear thing that we actually include this.
Okay.
Um, as a planning outcome, I don't, I'm, I'm unsure whether, whether it's necessary and are we in the business of imposing unnecessary, um.
Yeah, maybe I could ask Mr Bowles if he thinks that's, it's um, if there were any issues, concerns or any unnecessary.
Thank you for that, look, um, I just had a quick chat to my officer who carried out the assessment. Um, look, I, I don't think it would be too burdensome, um, if the, the council has uh, elicited a clear concern about the height of the stockpiles, um, that can be managed through a condition similar to that, we, we can be more specific. A- as I said, there is a fair bit of vegetation on the site a- and distance between the um, places where you'd be able to see the stockpile, but if, if we want to be specific, and there could be a scenario hypothetically, say for example that, um, there was quite a large amount of vegetation that needed to be stored on the site and it was piled in one particular pile, potentially it could be high. Um, I don't think it would be possible to make it higher, but we can, there's no harm, I don't think, in putting a restriction to, to limit to that height. Um, I don't think there'll be objections from the, the operator either, um. Uh, as I said, it, it, it probably isn't likely to happen, but we can guarantee that it won't through a condition.
And from my point of view, uh, mayor, I think that I'm always worried about combustion and fires starting, so I like all the conditions you're going to put on there. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put recommendations A through to C to the vote, those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item eight, which is the Waste and Circular Economy Transformation Directive Update Number Seven, may I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Um, good morning, mayor, and councillors, Peter Tabullo, General Manager of Planning and Regulatory Services, you might be surprised to see me up here instead of Mr Davy.
Yes.
Um, who unfortunately is not well today.
Oh, okay.
So you've got me.
Yep, thank, I'm sure, thank you, Mr Tabullo. Um, I guess this was a, a pivotal piece for us as a council that we endorsed in December twenty twenty. Um, how are we going with the joint task force with the state government and working together?
Um, mayor and councillors, the uh, joint task force met at the end of, end of May, um, and you would be aware that there has been a change um, at the director general level, um, within the state. Um, so Mr Kaiser now chairs, or is joint chair of that, that meeting, so a, a, a new person on board. Um, and um, one of the things that came out of that last meeting was just the need to do a bit of reflection as to how the meeting, its purpose is going and what it's set up for and what it's going to be delivering, um, so that will occur over, over the next few months. Um, while it may be difficult to point at some tangible outcomes from the meeting per se, um, what it certainly has is opened up the lines of communication between council and the various state government departments represented, represented at the task force meeting, um, and so that has um, enabled the state to get a better understanding um, of the situation, hear it from us at a personal level and from a community level about the issues, um, and, and going back to the start of it, is, that was reflected by us taking the representatives of the, of the committee of the task force on a, on a tour of New Chum and Swan Bank, which someone that had never been out to see, see the area, so small steps, um, but it is, it is, it is a win for us.
Okay. Uh, with the new director general, um, could we, have we extended an invitation to him to do a site visit as well?
Um, that will be coming, we, we've formally reached out to him, but it is our intent that when the opportunity arises that we will, we will do the same tour.
Okay. Um, I can see here you talked about some of the things that was discussed, so current issues with Cleanaway, how, how was that discussion?
Uh, yes, the, obviously Cleanaway has been a significant focus of this organisation and the state um, over the last few months, again, it is a matter of um, the state sharing with us their views on how um, they are responding to the um, to the odor issues and the management of the site from a Cleanaway perspective, recognizing um, at hand that the majority of the enforcement and remediation actions sits with the responsibility of the state to enforce, um, and seek the changes from Cleanaway.
Thank you. Um, how are we going with the environmental health response there?
Sorry, ma'am.
The environmental health response there?
Um, with Queensland Health?
Hmm.
Um, I've heard nothing, nothing back on, on that front, I'm not sure with, whether Mr Davy has or not, it hasn't been raised with me.
I've heard nothing back. Okay. Um, and obviously the, at the moment, the state government's looking at legislative review and environmental, you know, potentially EPA, was, how was that discussion?
Um, again, very early days, very high level, um, we certainly want to be a part of those conversations to ensure that we can put in place, or give the state some guidance as to how we think an environmental protection agency um, should respond, should act and take, take coverage or take charge of um, environmental matters across the state.
Okay. Onto another matter, I see, one of our, um, I guess, the number one principle that where we um, approved this directive was to establish a waste code of practice. Um, and I can see that we're now working with an, on an M O U with Raikew before we do a code of practice, so that's.
Yes, um, councillors, you will be aware that we, we held it, um, I think there's been two workshops between the um, Waste and Recycling Institute of Queensland, um, with us over the last twelve months or so. There's been a change in the C E O in that organisation as well, so it has to take a bit of a, a, a sideward step or, or restock um, their position as such, um, but certainly, um, we've been having those conversations with the new C E O and she is keen to put in place the memorandum of understanding between ourselves and Raikew, um, which will set some guidelines, some um, broad principles as to how the industry is prepared to act and respond um, across a range of themes.
Is this a delaying tactic?
No. Uh, it's just, again, one of those things with, with changes of personnel, um, it requires someone new coming in to pick up the, the um, the programme as to where it was at, understand it and, and uh, Mr Davy has been having those, those conversations um, with the C E O um, about the status of the organisation, the status of the plan, I should say.
I, I will be meeting with the, the new C E O, but um, the letter she sent me, the tone of it, I wasn't very happy with, so I was wondering if it was a delaying tactic.
No.
Thank you. Sorry, any other questions of, yes, yes, councillor Ireland?
Um, when you're going to do mine void mapping, uh, is that going out to the external companies that we usually use for that, or are we just doing that in-house?
Um, I don't know the specifics of how we're going to be doing the, the, the mapping, uh, councillor Ireland, um, but I would imagine that we would have to go out and, and seek a consultancy for it. Who we choose at the end of the day will depend on experience and our, our terms of reference.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr Tabullo? No, in that case, I thank you very much, Mr Tabullo, I appreciate that, I hope Mr Davy is, has a speedy recovery. Um, I'll move recommendations A and B, do I have a seconder to that, thank you councillor Doyle? I'll open it up for discussion. Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, mayor, um, you know, two years ago, when, when we um, were elected, um, it was one of the, the big issues that was, you know, a significant concern for residents right across um, Ipswich. Um, so I'm really uh, proud of this piece of work and the way we have all worked together and made it a priority. This is an opportunity, this was an opportunity for us to set the strategic direction of this council and send a very strong message to the waste industry that we expect a certain standard for our residents, so um, I appreciate the directive, uh, the update, um, for the average resident, uh, they may uh, feel that there hasn't been a significant uh, change or success, um, however, um, we cannot underestimate the work that's been done or undertaken in bringing council together with uh, both industry members as well as the state government, um, and, and I'm confident that, that we now um, have a, a voice um, amongst those um, key figures in the industry to um, guide some good change for our residents, so we will keep at it. Um, this is just one part in, in our response.
Thank you, councillor Doyle, yes, I think there's, there's to be behaviour change and cultural change with the waste industry as well as um, compliance and regulatory um, organisations as well.
Yes, um, absolutely, and, and we know that, that waste is a problem for um, residents in cities all around the world and that we need uh, to get better at managing our waste. Um, all of us and, and us here at Ipswich City Council and residents need to be taken on that journey with us, that it starts at home. Um, and, and ultimately, we have to do something with waste, and if we don't want to burn it or put it in the ground, um, we need to recycle better. But I'm, I'm happy with the success so far, um, of, of council officers, I think they need to be commended for having those, those discussions and sometimes really difficult discussions. Knocking on the door of the state government isn't always easy.
Hmm. I agree, I think the, the, the progress isn't as quick as what we wanted it, but I do know that, that couns- the council has been very proactive in, with the industry and with other agencies as well. Any other comments? No? In that case, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. I think we now go to item nine, which is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report for April twenty twenty-two. May I ask the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning all, Graham Martin, manager for Capital Delivery.
Thank you, Mr Martin, I know that the weather has not been our friend when it comes to capital delivery. May I just sort of highlight um, how you're managing um, the impacts of, of the flood to deliver capital?
Uh, it's really been a prioritisation, um, after the disruptions that we've had, so we've had to deploy some of our capital delivery staff onto flood recovery works as well, so it's a interesting when you dive into the numbers where we're down on certain aspects of the capital delivery programme, um, particularly, you know, in areas such as uh, gravel re-sheeting, it's because the crews are actually working on repairing gravel roads and their costs are being coded to the flood recovery works at the same time, so the activity's happening out in the field and I think they're doing a terrific job out there of uh, restoring the roads and improving what we had there before, uh, it's just a the devil's in the detail of where the, the costings are going and where the, the work is being highlighted. Uh, it's also a matter of managing our contractors that are working for us, and we've found a fair bit of difficulty from their end, um, availability, when they've had to leave site, coming back and having their availability for crews with health issues and all sorts of things, contractors being available to jump back in on short notice. Um, so we're just finding rather than uh, jobs being seriously delayed, there being constantly small delays, uh, our ability to get onto the jobs and really run as efficiently as we normally would are being impacted by the stop-starts. Um, but overall, I think the crews are jumped back into it. Um, the result for April being at that nine million dollar mark, which was our best result, I think was the really pleasing thing out of the six months that we've had is that when the weather's on our side, the crews are available, the procurement's run its course, people are ready to go and we can jump on it quick smart, so that's been, you know, a very pleasing outcome, as much as the number is a good number, it's actually the response was very pleasing.
Thank you, Miss Martin. Any other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
I move the report be received and the contents noted, do I have a seconder for that, thank you councillor Ireland? I'll open it up for discussion and I just want to um, thank the team moving into the operational side, I know this is a capital um, discussion, but um, I know there's over three thousand potholes have been fixed and lots of kilometres of roads, so thank you very much for um, for, you know, adhering, I've had many residents tell me that they've, they've rung in the morning um, to fix, have, to have a pothole fixed up and the crews have been out there that afternoon, so thank you very much for being very responsive during a very difficult time. Any other discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Move on to item ten, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report, does anyone have any questions of the council officers? On this, thank you, yes we do, thank you councillor Tully.
Good morning, mayor and councillors, Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Councillor Tully, would you like to ask a question?
Thank you, mayor, um, just the one relating to division two, and I'll just ask this generally, there's nothing confidential about this question. Um, it's the one for uh, Spring Lake Holdings Proprietary Limited, um, there was a hearing, preliminary, brief hearing in uh, February. Um, are we still outweighing the court decision on uh, on that matter?
That's correct, yes.
It seems like a fairly minor sort of issue, the preliminary point.
Um, I, on the surface, I'd say I'd agree, the the devil is again always in the detail, particularly with the Springfield Strachapane, um, and its relationship with the Planning Act after the Planning Act changes. Unfortunately, it is complicated, um, and there were quite a lot of representations made from our um, barrister during that hearing. Um, and probably quite a lot for the judge to consider, I believe, so uh, I, I had thought it would be something that would be relatively straightforward, but as the details were teased out by the barristers, it, it just wasn't that simple.
No, thank you, and was there any indication given at the time, um, that, that, not by the judge, but generally on, on our side, how, how long that might be?
Uh, I, as with all um, matters at the moment in the court, there is a real strong desire to move them through, so because this is a preliminary point and the, the real teeth of the argument hasn't, well, the real meat of the argument hasn't come up yet, I think there would be some desire to have this matter pushed on fairly quickly. Um, however, uh, due to the complexity, it might take them a while to do that, so unfortunately, I can't really say, but I do believe that there's um, some impetus to have this matter resolved.
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Mr Bowles, um, the court action for land track B M I and Cleanaway, it's now been ten months since the matter concluded, are we any closer to getting an outcome?
Uh, I'm, I'm afraid not, not, not at this point, however, I, while I'm up here, I will just give an update on a few matters relevant but not directly related to that, so uh, if you have a look at the judicial review of the call-in for the one list application, um, there is some notes there about some actions um, for delivery of information, but also um, an anticipated hearing potentially in August, dates haven't been set yet, but that will give us a bit of something I suppose to look forward to, um, in that there'll be action. Um, and likewise, at the moment, the um, the, the actual matter itself, the call-in, the minister's call-in is currently after public notification until the thirtieth of um, this month, so thirtieth of June, um, I'll be here in the next council meeting to um, offer a submission for your consideration. Uh, and I recommend anyone interested in that matter to make their own submission as well. Um, but as far as the um, landfill appeals themselves, unfortunately, um, we have not received a decision, um, and it may be a little while longer, um, just noting the complexity and the absolute mountain of paperwork that is required to, to go through that one.
Okay. Mr Bowles, for the call-in, is, do residents have to, if they were to put up something under this public notification, do they have to follow a certain template, bit like um, putting in a submission to, to council?
Um, there, there are rules, um, there are rules on the minister's website and it is best to make sure those boxes are ticked, they're, they're not complicated rules, it, it's really about making it to the right person within the right timeframe. Um, and the matters that can be considered or, or should be put in the submission are explained a bit more clearly on the minister's website, so there are some rules, um, but generally speaking, for, in our processes, for example, when we receive a submission, if it's close enough, the act gives us some permission to consider the submission as if it's, you know, relevant to the matter, so um, I, I would expect the minister would. Um, I I would expect the minister would probably have some, um, consideration for submissions that may be uh, you know, handwritten or or various things that may be not necessarily on the rules, but there are rules set out in the guidelines.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I move the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Legan. In discussion, I just know I've had some queries from from community who wish to participate that, that one less call-in. And they've asked us if we could do a template of some sort, not to, not to fill it out, but just to make sure that they've, you know, hit all the right places, so it's so it will be considered a properly made submission, so I just, I just note that.
We can direct them to the, yeah, the relevant website. That outlines the minister's requirements.
Thank you, Council Feigna. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We're now at item eleven, exercise of the delegation report. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this? No, I then move this recommendation, the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Feigna. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Um, there are no notices of motion if someone has something they wish to put forward for next time. No, no matters arising, there are no procedural motions in former matters. So it is now ten oh three. So I'll close the meeting and the next one will be at ten thirty-three. Thank you.